Thank you. The hearing will please come to order. Good evening, I'm John Galt. I'm the Lake Forest Park Hearing Examiner. It is now about two minutes after 6:00 PM on March 19th, 2025. Welcome to this evening's hearing. This is an open record hearing on city file number 2021-RE-0001. This is a reasonable use exception filed by Mark Gary. Our hearing tonight is going to take a standard format, a standard sequence of events that go as follows. At the end of my introductory comments, we will first hear direct testimony and evidence. That will be followed by an opportunity for rebuttal. And then the hearing concludes with optional closing statements. The direct testimony and the rebuttal occur in the same sequence, which is that our applicant will speak first, along with his witnesses. Then the city planning staff will speak next, along with any witnesses that they have. And then members of the public will testify. When we get to the closing statements, they are optional. And they are available only to the applicant and the staff in the reverse order that I just stated their names. So the staff will have the first opportunity for rebuttal. And then the applicant will have the concluding opportunity for a closing statement. I think I said rebuttal just a second ago. I meant closing statement. You'll notice in that sequence that our applicant begins the hearing and at least has the opportunity to also conclude the hearing. That's appropriate because the applicant bears the burden of proof. What that means quite simply is that it's up to the applicant to show by a preponderance of the evidence that his application complies with the criteria for approval of a reasonable use exception that are set out in the city code. The applicant can meet that obligation through testimony, through exhibits, or any combination of the both. The term reasonable use exception is usually shortened by folks who are in the planning business as simply RUE. And if you want to refer to it that way, please feel free to do so. There are some people with us online and there are a fair number of you there at the city council chambers. When it comes time for public testimony, I am going to first see if any of the folks who are with us online want to testify. And to do that, I will ask Mr. McLean at that time to see if any of the folks online are indicating to him, and there's a way they can do it, indicating to him that they wish to speak. And if they do, I will let him bring them up so that they are an active participant in the proceedings. Then I'll go through swearing them, hearing their testimony, and then he can put them back into the audience and take the next person. When he tells me that we've heard all the people who are here remotely who want to be heard, I will then go to the audience who are in person there at council chambers. And I think the easiest way to do that, since your images on my screen are relatively small, is again to let Mr. McLean sort of be the ringmaster, if you will. And I don't mean that in any pejorative sense to either him or the audience. But since he's closer to you and can see hands and what have you, I will let him call on people. And when you are recognized by Mr. McLean, come on up to the table that is at your left front where the microphone is. And we'll swear you in and take your testimony there. Then you can go back to your seat and he'll call the next person. The way swearing in works is really quite simple. If you're with me online, you'll just sit there. If you're at the hearing room, you'll take your seat, raise your right hand. I will raise my right hand. I will administer the oath to you. You will respond as your conscience dictates. Assuming your conscience leads you in the proper direction with your answer, I will then ask you to tell us your name and spell it, first and last, both pleads. Once you have done that, I typically say something like, "Thank you very much," or "Thank you, you may proceed." Something along that line, and that's your cue that you can begin your testimony. If I happen not to do that, which occasionally happens, wait a few seconds and then just go ahead and begin your testimony. I think because of the number of people that are here tonight and the large number of written comments that are already in the record, I'm going to invoke Rule of Procedure 312A regarding the nature and length of testimony. That rule allows me to prevent duplicative and repetitive testimony and to impose time limits. The applicant during his initial presentation will not be limited to a specific time limit. But I do expect him to respect the fact that there is a lot of evidence that he has submitted. I'll be entering it into the record momentarily, and I have read all of it. So he doesn't, he or his witnesses do not need to sit and read to me what's in their written reports. In fact, I beg them not to do that. Members of the public will have a three-minute time limit for your oral testimony tonight. I would remind you that testimony, that that time, that three-minute time for testimony is not cumulative and you cannot trade it with other people. Your three minutes' time will begin after we've done the swearing in, so don't worry about that. None of that time will count against your testimony time. You do not need to read or repeat what you have already submitted in the record as written materials. In fact, I don't want you to. And if I sense that what you're doing is reading the materials you've already submitted, I will ask you to please either summarize them or move on to some other part of your comments. I have a list of all the people whose written testimony or written comments have been listed as exhibits to enter into the record tonight. I will read that list just before we begin the public testimony. I see no benefit in reading it to you now because you may forget some of the names by the time we get to public testimony. If you agree with a prior witness, you are certainly entitled to come to the speaker's table, get sworn in, and state that "I agree with everything Joe Smith said," or "I agree with almost everything, but I disagree with so-and-so." Instead of repeating it, just do that. That is far more effective. One thing that sometimes people don't necessarily realize about a hearing examiner system and the Hearing Examiner hearing is that this is not a popularity decision. I do not make decisions based on how many people support it or oppose it or whatever. It's the facts that are presented that are important. So 15 people saying one thing is no better than one person saying that thing, which is why I really encourage people not to just keep going over and over and saying the same thing that somebody else has already said. There's another rule that it's not that I'm applying it just tonight, but I usually don't explain it. Rule of Procedure 304C, as in Charlie, allows me to ask questions of any participant in the hearing. Applicants, consultants, members of the staff, members of the public. If any of you have ever been in a hearing before me, you know that I typically do that after all of the direct testimony has been completed and before we move into rebuttal. Because of the hybrid nature of our hearing tonight, I've decided I'm not going to follow my usual form. And if I have a question about something that you've said or something that you've asked in your testimony that I don't understand or that I think I need to have some clarification on, I will ask it of you after your testimony. And obviously, the questions that I might ask you and the time that you spend answering them doesn't count against your three minutes. A reasonable use exception is akin to a type 1 variance. The code is clear that the Hearing Examiner has jurisdiction to hear and decide reasonable use exceptions. The code does not expressly list them as one of the typed applications. However, since they are seeking an exception to the rule, which is the same thing a zoning variance is, is an exception to the rule, I treat them as a type 1. A type 1 application requires an open record hearing before the examiner, which is what we are here to do tonight. After which, I have a period of 10 days to reach and issue a written decision. That decision will be a final decision for the city, subject to the right of reconsideration, and appealed directly to Superior Court. I include in my decision a couple of paragraphs near the end, right after my signature block, that briefly explain the reconsideration process and the appeal process. And so I will not take our time up tonight going over that. Once I've prepared my decision, I send it to the city via email. And the city then disseminates that decision to everyone who is a party of record. One of the exhibits that I will be entering here momentarily, in specific Exhibit 16, is a list of the parties of record that the city already has based on the written comments and communiques that it has had with people before the hearing. I'm guessing that the city has a paper copy of its exhibits with it tonight. And if so, they'd be able to show you Exhibit 16 if you're interested in seeing whether your name's already on it. Those who testify tonight will also become parties of record, as well as those folks who are here tonight, even if you choose not to testify and even if you didn't submit a comment. But by being here and participating, you can become a party of record. For those who are in the audience, I would suggest that at the end of the hearing, you talk to one of the city staff people that's there and either give them your contact information or make sure that they already have it. The city is willing to send documents to you via email. In fact, I haven't asked them this, but I'll bet you dollars to donuts they would prefer to distribute the decision electronically than to have to copy it and mail it to you. So if you're willing to get electronic service of the decision, so indicate by giving them your email address and not your postal address. I'm required to base my decision on the criteria for approval of an RUE, which are set out at Section 16.16.250 of the municipal code. In addition to those specific criteria, I do consider any other relevant provisions and requirements of the city code, provisions of adopted city policies and plans to the limited extent that they can be considered in a case such as this. State law and rule and judicial precedent, all applied to the testimony and the evidence that is entered into the record of our hearing tonight. I reserve the right to take official notice of applicable case law, provisions of state laws and rules of the city code. Are there any questions regarding hearing procedures? Are there any objections on conflict of interest? Hearing none, we will move along. City Code allows me to view a site prior to coming for a hearing. I have for a number of years now been typically doing my site visits via Google Earth and its imagery. The overhead imagery that I viewed on Google Earth was captured on October the 12th of 2024. The street view imagery was captured on two different dates. The imagery along 37th Avenue was captured in, let's see, looks like September of 2021. And the street view imagery on 205th, or if you're looking at it from the St. Holmes County side of the line, 244th, was captured in June of 2019. In addition to that imagery, there are a number of photographs of the site in various exhibits throughout the record. The next and final introductory item is to enter the exhibits. There are a total of 27 exhibits, which the city staff has taken from its processing file materials on the basis that it believes those documents would have either substantive and/or procedural value to me as the decision maker. They've marked those documents as Exhibits 1 through 27. All 27 of them have been available for public review on the city's website in the days and weeks leading up to our hearing. I hereby enter into the record prefilled Exhibits 1 through 27. In doing that, I want to just briefly indicate that Exhibit number 5, comments that came in during the initial notice of application, contains comments from 26 persons. Exhibit number 6, which is a collection of public comments that came in after the notice of application comment period, contains five comments. The comments that came in during the CEPA review time period are contained in Exhibits 23, 24, and 25. Exhibit 23 has 14 comments. Exhibit 24 has 11. And Exhibit 25 has 12. So if you were to consider, everything is having a separate exhibit number. We have far more than 27 exhibits in the record. Alrighty. It's time for direct testimony. It's been indicated previously that our applicant is seated at your right front, my left as I look at the screen. I'm not sure who there is going to begin for the applicant, but whoever that is, okay, sir, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll be offering in this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Would you state your name and spell it for the record, please?
Mark Gary, M-A-R.
Excuse me? Whoa, the audio on that's terrible. Is it bad there in the hall?
Yes, we're attempting to mute the second laptop.
We'll have a fix in just a second.
The audio was so sharp and clear before we started.
Is that better?
That's not better. It's fuzzy. It's like something's rubbing or brushing against something.
Okay, how's that? Is that better?
Not really.
The laptop then. Is it something else?
Does the mic on the other table do the same thing?
Testing, testing on the other table. How does that sound?
But it's still, it's weird because when you were talking on that mic, before the hearing started, it was crystal clear.
How about now?
Better. I think I can understand it. I'm just concerned what the quality of the recording's going to be.
Yeah, it's not, we have all, it's not anybody's laptop. I'm not sure. Is that better? No.
Honestly?
Yeah, not good.
It's got a very gravelly, almost echoey sound.
Yeah.
Is there a microphone open on another desk that's doing the feedback somehow?
Okay, is that better?
That's better.
Ah, okay, so we turned off the other mics. I think we figured out the...
It's not perfect, but it's better.
Okay.
Okay, so you are, your name, please, and spell it.
Mark Gary, M-A-R-K-G-A-R-E-Y.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. Go ahead.
Okay. So I'd like to introduce some of the people that have been working on this from the first day. Of course, online is Mark Plug. He's the civil engineer. You probably have read through the documents. And then sitting to the right of me is Nell Lund and Alex Capron. And they're from formerly Watershed, now it's called Facet. And because you said, "Don't talk about stuff that's already in exhibit," I'll add some color and do some introductions. And then I'll hand it over to Alex to walk through some additional information and details, if that sounds fair. Both Mark Plug and Alex and Nell, they've done projects here in Lake Forest Park before for the city, including, I think, even the work on the creek out front here as well, in front of City Hall. So they're familiar with how the city process and how things work. So I just wanted to let everybody know that they do have some history with the city. Okay, let me do a little introduction. Like I said, I'll add a little bit of color and depth, I think, to the project. And then I'll hand it over to Alex. So, and I've reading through the notes from a lot of people. There's a lot of feedback. And I'll just try and summarize a couple of responses to some of the items. Alex can talk in detail about the technical. I'll talk more to the personal side. I just want to make it clear to everybody that I'm an individual. I bought the property to build a single-family home for myself. My plan is to have the home be ADA-friendly. And I saw this in a couple of the comments. I'm not a builder. A lot of people somehow seem to think I'm a builder. I'm not a builder. Okay, and the other thing too is, you know, I appreciate the feedback from the city and even some of the comments, you know, along the journey when we first started. I didn't think it would take this many years. You know, we started just before COVID, and I'm not using COVID as an excuse or anything, but essentially the city shut down for, I'll say, pretty much a year, it seemed like. You know, we started just before the city. I purchased the property. And just as a reminder, you can go look this up in MLS. I purchased the property, you know, the property, by the way, and this isn't in anything you've read, Mr. Galt, the property was listed in MLS for four years for sale. For four years, it was for sale. There was a big sign out front. When I talked to the Realtor, they never had an offer. The city never offered to purchase it. None of the neighbors ever offered to purchase it. Well, I did purchase it. I purchased it with the intent of building a single-family home for myself. I love the area. I love bike riding. I do. It's close to the trail. I think the city has proposed a bike path all the way up to and, believe it or not, ending at the property, which I think is a fantastic point for me because I do love biking. So that's not in any of the documents. So I have personal attachment to the property and it's been my intent. Now, why has it taken so long? You know, we started the process. I think we first started doing the survey. Mark Plug went out there. And Nell went out there just before COVID hit. We did some tests. We submitted it to the city. By the time we got feedback for the city in the first round, I think a whole year has elapsed. And once again, I'm not trying to blame anybody at the city, not trying to blame stuff on COVID. But, you know, it seemed like a whole year went by and not much got done. So let's jump to a couple of years after that. In that time span, after COVID, I'm not sure exactly what happened. And I don't think the people, and I'm not saying anything about the people at the city here, but city resources were quite slim. And they really didn't pay much attention to my project. We went round and round a couple of times, and the city had changed resources. And once again, I'm not trying to make excuses or lay blame or anything. But that's why, if you notice on the permits and a lot of the dates, you'll see a 2019 revision, a 2021 revision, a 2022 revision, a 2023 revision, is because as people from the city kept coming and going, they kept asking for different things. And it seemed like the goalposts kept moving a little bit. Okay, you know, we do a CEPA. You don't need a geotech. You know, the first round with WDWF, excuse me, thank you, thank you, sorry. That acronym's still, I'm still working on it. You know, the first round, we did a site visit, the first round with them, they said, "Oh, you know what? No problem. We have that in email. We submitted that as one of the exhibits." And then lately, they came back and said, "Oh, no, no, no. We need much more, we need much more work on this property." That's fine. We had a positive meeting just in the past two weeks. Alex is going to talk more about that in a few minutes. So that's a little bit of color there. And also too, I want to say during that timeframe from 2021 to 2023, you know, we had a couple of incidences with the property that had to have us go back and redo some things. One of them was the city, without my knowledge, installed a drain. And you'll notice that on the plans in the upper right-hand, sorry, the upper left-hand corner of the plans. The city installed a drain on the property and it wasn't included. You know, they just installed it. They didn't contact me. They didn't have my approval. And then when I talked to Nick Holland, who was the former planner, and once again, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus. He said, "Oh, yeah, yeah, we installed that drain, you know, and it drains down into the creek." Did that drain cause any additional stress on the creek? I don't know. You know, once again, that drain was installed. And I said, "Hey, you installed this drain." The city's response was, "Yeah, go back and redo your plans and incorporate that drain." And so I had to get, you know, Mark Plug and Nell Lund. They had to go back out there and redo the survey, and another couple of months passed, et cetera. And then I said, "Shouldn't the city, you know, do an easement or something?" And the response from the city was, "We're going to incorporate that into your RUE." Now, I don't know if that's clearly presented in the exhibits, but that's what's told. And you'll see that on the plans, that that city drain was installed without my knowledge. I had to pay for, out of my pocket, having everything redone and then resubmitted to incorporate that drainage structure. Okay, once again, I don't want to slam anybody at the city. Stuff gets done sometimes without the proper process. I get it. Okay, and then the other little bit of color to this is the neighbor. The neighbor has a 15-foot easement to their property. Okay, it's a paved driveway. You can see that on the far western edge of the plans. You'll see a pavement. Over the years, the neighbor has cut back the trees, cut back the shrubbery on my property, installed gravel so they can park cars. And if you look at that Google Earth street view that you mentioned earlier a few minutes ago, if you look at that, you'll see Google Earth that that... if you look at that, you'll see Google Earth that that 15-foot easement has gotten wider and wider and really has encroached outside of the easement onto my property so that that person can park vehicles. I told that person, both in email and in person, stop doing this. Because if you think about it, and now I'm not, I'm not a geologist, but just logically, if you're taking the tops, the top of the slope and you're pushing, pushing, pushing towards the creek, you're actually increasing the slope. Right? Does that make sense? So that again, is not really in the exhibits. So I just wanted to add some color there. And I would ask that neighbor, again publicly, please stop parking your cars on my property outside of your easement. Please stop cutting back the trees and shrubs. And please stop adding more gravel because you're making the slope steep. All that stuff comes down and you're changing the stream. Okay, so I wanted to point that out. A couple of the other things too, I just wanted to talk about was, well, I think I kind of talked about it, which was, you know, the overall delays in resources. I'm glad that the city now has guys that look like they're really committed to getting this through the process. And so I'm thankful for that. We finally got to this hearing. It's been a long process. I think we've done. And I think a lot of the neighbors are probably confused because they've probably gotten three separate SEPA letters over the past 12 months. And I think the last SEPA letter is the one that actually stuck that got us to today. And I just want to have everybody just keep in mind, you know, it's, it's a small, single-family home. I want to take feedback from the community. I'm a nature lover. I love biking. I don't want to do anything to hurt salmon. But at the end of the day, you know, if you look at some of the things that the city and the county is asking for is, rather than building huge developments out in Monroe or Sammamish, want in-building. King County wants people to live closer to where there's metro transit, where the commutes are shorter. I could easily purchase some land way out in Monroe, but what am I doing if you look holistically overall to the environment? I have a much longer commute to work. I have a much longer commute to public transit. Right? I'm actually making it worse overall, holistically for the environment than I actually live in close. You know, if I live in close, I've got King County Metro, you know, a few blocks down, I could almost walk to the bus stop from my, you know, future home. So, you know, so we want to look at a lot of considerations. Is there going to be impact to the property? Yeah, there's going to be impact to the property. We're going to remove two trees, two trees. And then we're going to plant, as you know, you've seen the exhibits, a lot more trees. We're going to implant trees specific to Washington State. We're going to remove a lot of invasive species that really encumber a lot of the property right now. And, you know, so I think this is a valid, reasonable case. Now, I know two weeks ago, when we got the letter from the city, they've got a long list of, sort of a long list of demands. We've looked through them. I'm very, very flexible. I want to work with you. I want to work with the city. I want to work with W D W F. Yeah, thank you. And I apologize to them for confusing their letters all the time. But, you know, and, and people here, I'm sure people have concerns, you know, hey, you know, flooding this, that, it's not in the floodplain. Is it in the floodplain? You know, stuff like that we can do. We can readdress. We can get Mark Plugs online. He can go back, redo this, redo the work with Nell and Alex. We can relook at the 300 or 500-year flood plan, et cetera. So we're very, very flexible in working with and taking input. You know, we don't want this, believe me. You know, we don't, we don't want to end up in court. We don't want, you know, let's, let's have a peaceful resolution. Give us a list. Give us directions. If something doesn't get, if you feel like you can't approve or you can't, some kind of conditional improvement with, hey, you've got to figure all this out. That's, that's fine. That's the path we want to go. Because at the end of the day, it's a, it's a beautiful community. You know, it's, I think it supports a lot of things, like I said. You know, if, if you buy a house or build a house out, way out, you're actually contributing to noise pollution, traffic pollution, more carbon, everything else. You know, you want to live in the city. That's why the city and the county have passed those kinds of policies and ordinances where they want in-building. You know, they want to do the in-building closer and closer to Seattle rather than further and further away from Seattle. Anyways, with that, I'm going to hand it over. Hand it over to Alex. Are you ready? Okay, you know, let's use this mic and I'm just going to move this over. And Mr. Galt, unless you have any specific questions for me right now, I'm going to give it over to Alex.
Not at this point. I think I'd like to hear your other speakers first.
All right. Alex Capron.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll be offering in this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And would you spell your name, please?
A L E X C A P R O N.
Thank you, Mr. Capron. Go ahead.
All right. Well, I do want to acknowledge the hard work by staff to get us here today, as well as acknowledge subsequent code changes that have clarified development standards and interests and concerns made by the public. So I do want to emphasize that this property is zoned for single-family use, as well as a future land use designation of single-family residential moderate slash high, as supported by the staff report page eight. So that's exhibit one. So this, in turn, does not support anything less than a single-family home as a economically viable use for this site, as the current designation stands. So specifically, the Washington State Constitution and state law under RCW 3670A dot O two O subsection six provides that no private property shall be taken for public use without just compensation having first been made. So regulations that severely restrict a property owner's use of having their property can cause a taking. And takings relate to the owner's ability to utilize the property for some form of economically viable use. So with that, and in light of the code changes for this development application, applicant is willing to reduce the house footprint size to 750 square feet. So that would be an adjustment of exhibit two and a cumulative floor area of 1,500 square feet, shifting the residence further east from its present location, shown in exhibit two. A reduction in driveway length is also proposed over what is shown, while still retaining the projected width to ensure a minimum of four feet on either side of a parked van for ADA compliance needs. As a result, this does meet our R U E criteria on D four in the staff report and the footprint established guidelines in Lake Forest Park Municipal Code 16 dot 16 dot 250B subsection 10. And then, yeah, there were a lot of comments, as well as comments from Department of Fish and Wildlife regarding flooding. And so to address flooding, the project does completely avoid the mapped FEMA 100-year floodplain, floodplain. And the first floor is proposed to be constructed at 272 feet in elevation versus the delineated ordinary high watermark of 262 feet in the vertical datum where Lion Creek lies. So the final elevation will be determined by civil engineering review. Also want to note, the project will incorporate flood resilient foundation design, yeah, contingent upon structural engineering analysis. And then to address mitigation concerns, the project team did meet with Department of Fish and Wildlife, the project contact who made comments under SEPA. And who, yeah, who commented on the SEPA mitigation, mitigated determination and insignificance. So further information and a site visit by Department of Fish and Wildlife. So this, this current contact is needed for this project to get a full understanding of scope. So our, our client, Mr. Gary, did mention that there has been a staff turnover at the city side, but also there's been a staff turnover on Department of Fish and Wildlife. So while one wildlife biologist commented on a previous design, which is a rain garden design, and then said an HPA was not necessary under the project when design changes were made, this Fish and Wildlife biologist made these comments. So our next step would be to take a provide amended mitigation design and provide those to Department of Fish and Wildlife under a hydraulic project authorization pre-application meeting onsite. And I will have an additional exhibit to add to the record that includes kind of a summary of some of the talking points. But, yeah, more concrete feedback is needed by Fish and Wildlife in review of a potential erosion, erosion control opportunities for stream bank stabilization, as well as a review of potential in-stream enhancement by a fisheries biologist on the project team. So as a result, the applicant project team requests that the hearings examiner remand this application back to the applicant and city once public comment has been received here in the hearing tonight to address additional information needs and to complete the record for the R U E requests, request for approval. And that, yeah, that concludes my testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Capron. Your associate may be wanting to speak too, but based on what you've just said, I do want to ask you a few questions where we're going procedurally here. If I understood correctly, you said that you want me to continue with the hearing, take the public testimony, and then remand the case back to you for revision, which would then require coming back for another hearing sometime in the future, whenever you've done what you feel you want and need to do. Did I get that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Let me play devil's advocate for a minute. You want me to remand the application because you want to change it in ways that you think will solve problems noted by WDFW and City. But you want me to go ahead and hear the testimony tonight from the citizens who only know about the current proposal. And they may be complaining about things that won't even be problems in the next iteration. So I I'm sitting here and thinking, why are we going to endure what likely is not going to be positive testimony? And I say that only because there is not one, single one of those 68 emails that says, please approve this project. They're all disagreeing with its approval for one reason or another. So I expect that's what I will hear tonight in the testimony. And yet you're going to be giving me a different project to look at. And I'm you know, I'm wondering frankly, how useful and helpful that will be. If, if there were no public comment letters in the record at all and we had a room full of people, I can see where it would make eminent sense to hear the testimony. If for no other reason, then it would give you an idea of what the concerns were that members of the public have. But we've already got 68 documents setting forth, in some cases, lists of objections. Right? I'm willing to sit here and do it. Now, it's my job, but I'm wondering how beneficial it is to go through with the rest of the hearing tonight. When what you're going to be asking me to approve is in some way different from where we are now.
Mr. Galt, can I, can I say something?
Yes, Mr. Gary.
So two, you know, two weeks, I think March 6th is the letter we got back from the city where they said, you know, we recommend denial, right? You got, you read that letter. Right? And then they gave a list of conditions. Between March 6th and today is just not enough time. You know, it took us a week just to schedule a meeting with, yeah, thank you, WDFW. You know, it took us a week just to get them on the calendar, to walk through their considerations and then go back with the city and say, hey, how are we going to handle this in this meeting? And collectively, probably without, you know, we, we thought this might be the best method is to ask you. So maybe what we need to do then is, is there a rule in your process that says we, we have a continuation on the meeting? So we suspend it now. We work with WDF to relieve, to get them to, you know, my, my state would be to get them to approve. If they approve, the city will approve, right? So then we can come back in, I don't know, eight weeks, 12 weeks, eight weeks. I don't know what the time, time it's going to be. But it'll, it'll be sometime because we'll have to go back out there and do a site visit with, with Fish and Game and, and the city. And redo, redo those plans. And then we can come back here, give people the opportunity to take a look at those plans. And then maybe they can have public comment because now, now that you said it, it's crystal clear, obviously. It doesn't make sense for people to complain about something being close to the creek. For example, the rain garden being close to the creek, when in fact, it, there may never be a rain garden, right? We were asked to put a rain garden in because the storm drain is like at 80% capacity and they don't want to add anything to it. They want to put the water back into the ground. So, so maybe we do redo the plans and is there, and let me go back and ask that question again. Is there a process where we can suspend the meeting? You can suspend the meeting for another date in the future, whether it's 10 weeks or 12 weeks. I don't know the exact time, but it sounds like that. Is there, is there a method for doing that? Have you ever done that before? Or is this going to be the first?
Absolutely, yes. I've done it many times in my 46-year career doing this. There are at least two ways that we could do it. I can continue the hearing to a date and time certain. Or the second one that I, that comes immediately to the top of my head is that I can continue it indefinitely to a date to be determined at a later time. The advantage and disadvantage of each of them or the advantages and disadvantages of each of them are, if I were to continue the hearing to a date and time certain and I announce that date and time certain on the record tonight, then there is no reason nor legal need to issue additional written notice, published notice, the newspaper notice. You don't have to do all of that over again.
Okay.
The primary disadvantage of going to a date and time certain is that, as you've indicated, getting ahold of some of these state people and, and even probably with your own consultants, getting work done in their work schedule. You may not know for sure tonight what their timeline is and when you can get something back and when you can get it submitted to the city and so on. And if we come to the hearing at the date and time certain and it's not ready, then we got to delay it again. That's the downside. Going to a date and time uncertain eliminates that problem because you would do what- because you would do whatever it is you're going to do, get your additional material together, submit it to the staff, they'd review it, you and they would do whatever you're going to do. And then when you think you're ready to come back, you'd be able to tell them, okay, let's get this thing scheduled and get on with the hearing. So the hearing would then be scheduled. Of course, the disadvantage of that is it probably adds time to it. Because you don't know when you're going to get finished, and when you get finished and you turn it into the city, then they've got to do some review and you've got to do the hearing notice process all over. So that adds more time. I, I think if, if I were in your shoes and wanted to have the hearing continued, I probably would opt for the date and time certain. But I would ask for a conservative date after you've consulted with your consultants sitting there with you and sort of take what you think is the worst, the worst chance situation and say, okay, we'll ask her a hearing date that's beyond that date. That's probably what I would do.
July 1st. I, I think either that date or later. Is that, is that reasonable? Give, give me one minute, Mr. Gault.
Sure.
That's plus 90 days. That's almost 100 days.
Mr. Gault, at the, at the pleasure of the hearing examiner, may staff provide feedback on this item?
Yes, let me swear in whoever's talking.
Uh, first. Mark Hoffman, Community Development Director.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll be offering in this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman, since your name is in the record here, I won't ask you to spell it. Go, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Gault. As this is being discussed, staff would point the hearing examiner to the Rules of Procedure, page eight, section 200.
Hang on a minute.
Number, oh, sorry.
It's. Oh, part 200?
Yeah, part 200, section 216 on page eight, A and B.
There is no 215.
Section 216 is titled applicant's submittal deadlines, project.
16, I'm sorry, I thought you said 215.
Yeah, 216, apologies.
216, okay, I'm with you now.
Staff believes it is the discretion of the hearing examiner, but wanted to point out this section, A and B, and it very well maybe deemed that that would be a new application. We have not seen an alternative. We have reviewed and made a recommendation on the existing project application. And under B, it delineates what submittals are and aren't. And while the applicant has an opportunity to suggest small changes to a reviewed plan to address comments and issues in this setting, I don't believe they, they have the right to change their application under this section.
Well, the intent of Rule 216 is essentially set out in subpart A, which is dealing with applicant's submittals made less than 15 days before the scheduled hearing date. And the notion there is that I did not want applicants showing up with a brand-new site plan at the hearing, which nobody had a chance to see. And what it goes on to say is if they want to submit something that's new like that, it would only be if the hearing is postponed to a date sufficiently far in the future to allow proper review of the submittals by staff and public. So I don't see a problem with that as long as the time that Mr. Gary is contemplating includes time to get it to you folks for your review, et cetera. I, I don't see that rule as keeping us from doing what we're talking about. Now, if you folks, under your rules for what constitutes a resubmittal, ruled differently under your own city code, that's nothing I can say anything about.
I will add that we have not seen any new materials. We spent extensive time reviewing the materials that we have. In, in light of that, there should be no certainty as to the time length of our review. If you continue date certain, that fences in our review.
Okay, I can see that, I see your point. I stand by what I said about Rule 216, but I see your point on this one, which I think is a different issue. But yet, an important issue. And the public, in order to be fair to them, also would need to have a resubmittal made far enough before the hearing that they would be able to review it if they wish to and submit, if you will, replacement comments on what they may have already submitted if they wish to.
Staff, staff has no worry that the application, the fee, the number stay active, but that we have the freedom to do an entire review on whatever we're about to see.
If, if I could add in there, I mean, really what we're talking about here is, and Alex said it, is reducing the footprint to 750 square feet, right? So we're actually reducing the size. And we're talking about changing the foundation to be flood resilient, even to the point of where maybe water flows underneath, if it does flood. So a lot of the components here are not going to change. You know, we're only taking down two trees. We're adding a lot more trees than we're, we've taken down. The, if anything, we're increasing the area for natural habitation. We'll be increasing that footprint for natural habitation. So in, in essence, I think it's still the same plan with, you know, at what point do we say it's a minor change? The footprint is being reduced because we're trying to be flexible to meet the city and the fishing game input.
To, to my hearing, though, you are changing some of the significant concepts involved in the proposal. Perhaps far for the better, but you're still making some potentially significant changes. And I fully see the city's concern with having an adequate opportunity to review.
Could I ask the city, how, what, how much time do you need? 15 days or 30 days?
Through the hearing examiner, it's undetermined. We, we've been through notice of application with extensive comment. We've been through environmental review with more extensive comment. Notice of hearing, the issues are not isolated to one comment letter from an agency. Staff has made an independent review and recommendation based on the record. We would like an opportunity to repeat that work based on whatever we're potentially going to see.
I am willing to continue the hearing, but only to a date and time uncertain within, I do think it's appropriate to put an outer limit on when the applicant would have to make his resubmittals, and that would be six months from tonight.
That's, that's acceptable. We were actually thinking 120 days. So if we submit within 120 days, we're within our 180-day window. Is that, is that how I understand it, Mr. Gault?
If the applicant resubmitted within 120 days, Mr. Hoffman, would 60 days be sufficient for staff review?
It's, it's not possible to determine that. We would essentially start the process with that it is a complete application assumption, review the materials, and then make a judgment call that those materials are represented by all the other materials in the record, which is extensive. If that were the case, the 120 days would work because we would, in theory, re-review CIPA, do a new notice of hearing, new comment periods. But I would not want to do away with any of those official steps. I believe the current code currently calls for type one to be completed in 170 days by current amendments under RCW.
For projects that were filed after January 1, I think it is.
Whenever that goes into effect. So we, yeah, we far exceeded the, the original application timeline, which is cited in the staff report. We acknowledge that. We would intend to stick to a very straightforward timeline with no delay. But we, we request that we have ample time to do that review.
Let me fine tune what I said then. Because I, I, I don't believe I can set a hearing date with the information that we have available tonight. But I also don't want to do it totally open-ended. I, I did that way back in the old days a few times, and I think there was at least one occasion when I sort of got snookered with an application that I continued indefinitely, and it didn't come back for about four or five years. And by that time, the city had entirely new rules. This is not Lake Forest Park case. The city had entirely new rules, and yet because it was a continuation of the original thing, we had to use the old rules. And that's kind of hard to explain to the public why it happens that way. So I've, ever since that experience, I've tried not to get myself in that box. So I would set a deadline for the applicant to submit any revised plans and proposals for 180 days after tonight. And then the regular review process would continue. I would not set a deadline for the hearing. I'm willing to do it that way.
Staff finds that acceptable.
Thank you. Yep. Applicant finds that acceptable.
Okay. There. Let me go through some of the questions that I was likely going to ask, because some of them just ask for information. And I think it would be totally unfair not to tell you what information I, I was curious about and wait six or more months to find out. It would be extremely helpful if there could be a plan submitted that shows the dimensions of the property. There is one. Let me see, where is it? I made a note of it. But it's, it's the base for sort of, there it is. Exhibit 17, PDF page 14, has a map that would work very well. But on the electronic copy that I have, the dimensions, the radius, the curvature length on the thing are totally unreadable. I just, the minute I enlarge it on my computer screen, it falls apart. None of the other exhibits have that problem. I'm able to enlarge them and read everything on it. That one particular exhibit's just totally unreadable. And I would like to have a readable version of that or a readable version of the clean survey that made the basis for that exhibit. Because that's in Exhibit 17, which if memory serves me, is the the Arbus report, yeah. So he obviously got it from somebody and then put his trees on it. So that's one thing I would hope that you could produce for me.
Pardon me, hearing examiner, through the examiner, one comment on that specific item. There's a title report listed as an exhibit that has a series of easements that are not shown on any site plan or exhibit in the record right now. Could staff ask that those easements, as they relate to the current property, be shown?
And I would agree. I was going to ask that it at least show the easement to the 3611 property to the south, so that that's clear.
We'll, we'll make sure that happens. This is the applicant.
I would note, although I don't think either of these items are particularly relevant in an RUE case, that both your water and sewer certificates expired years ago. Your water certificate expired on November 20th of 2021, and your sewer certificate expired on November 19th of 2020. So to the extent you want me to see current ones that are valid, you need to go back to the appropriate agencies.
Yes, I, I will comply with that.
The topography appears to stop at the edge of the property, not at the edge of the street. So I can't tell what the elevation of the street is, in particular 37th, but also 205th. I don't know whether the street's at the last elevation level that's shown or whether it jumps up on a berm. Some of the, the text in the record would seem to indicate that 37th was built on fill. And so when I went looking at topography, I was expecting to see a grade up to the highway, and I don't see it. So if the topography could depict that, I think it would help with respect to a number of the issues involved in the case. A regulatory question, does the Westerly steep slope qualify as a regulated critical area? It would appear from everything that's said in here that it's a slope greater than 40%. And it's not apparently underlaid by hard rock. So it would be a regulated steep slope, and that would require a 50-foot buffer at the base of that, which could be reduced to 25 feet with a geotechnical certification that the buff, the slope is stable. How does that affect our proposal and our project?
Originally.
With respect to the critical area studies, neighborhood analysis. I have had some experience in other jurisdictions with neighborhood analyses that have bothered me because they seem to be comparing lots that are not constrained by critical areas with lots that are constrained by critical areas. And so it would be helpful to me if that type of analysis is going to be presented that it indicate in some fashion what percentage of these other lots are similarly encumbered as this one with critical areas. Somebody who's building a house on a perfectly flat, stable lot can expect to be able to make the maximum house size that the code would allow. Somebody on a lot that the whole lot slopes. Somebody on a lot that the whole lot slopes at a hundred percent, uh, maybe can't have that same expectation, even if the lots were the same size. Uh, and that's been my concern with these neighborhood analyses that others have submitted in other cases, in other jurisdictions. So I just mentioned that as something to be aware of. Had some questions about distances. Um, because of course, when I take the electronic file and then print it out, I obviously don't get the original scale and sometimes I get a really weird scale that's someplace between, you know, one to twenty and one to thirty, but you never know what it is. It's some weird thing. Uh, I did find an exhibit in here, in fact, exhibit seven, PDF page two, um, that I was, when I printed it out, it came out pretty much at a precise one to thirty. So one inch to thirty feet. Not a ratio one to thirty, but one inch to thirty feet. And so I'm happy with that unless there is, um, something that you wanted to give me that had, that was more accurate in, um, figuring out distances.
We can, we, we can make that adjustment, Mr. Gault.
There is, um, a section in the code that I don't have jurisdiction over. And I, it, it's the one right in front of the R U E. It's the section sixteen sixteen two forty about aggregate zoning setbacks and how an applicant with a critical area restrained lot uh, can, with the planning director's permission, do some juggling of setbacks to try and further avoid uh, the critical area. And my question would only be, is the applicant contemplating asking for any of that? Is that something that you folks have thought about or if not, maybe you would look at and see if you want to build any of that process into your revised proposal? I'm not asking for an answer now, but just I, I saw it and I thought, oh, this would give them some more flexibility. I don't know whether they're planning to use it or not. The, the tree canopy question, uh, this is in exhibit seventeen. Uh, particularly around, uh, uh, PDF page nine is talking about tree canopy and resulting tree canopy after clearing for the, the, uh, residents. My question is, I recognize, I, I honestly think some of the folks who submitted comments don't understand that the city regulates only significant trees and those are trees of only a certain size or larger. And that this site may be a hundred percent wooded, but if a lot of the trees are less than six inches in diameter, breast height, those don't count in the calculations that the code requires. But I wonder, in the calculation for tree canopy, if trees other than significant trees are removed from a site, does that removal apply to the tree canopy calculation? For example, what I'm, I'm, let me make up something. Let's say that a site has only one tree that's bigger than six inches in diameter, but the entire lot is covered with trees that are one, two, three, four, five inches in diameter. So none of them are counted for saving trees. Are they counted in tree canopy? And if to build something, you cut down a lot of the small trees, does that affect the tree canopy? And that again is a question to ask and not answer tonight, but, uh, please make sure that I'm not wondering about it when we get back together. I think those are the only questions that I had others on here, but since we're going to be looking at a different design, I, there's no reason to even ask about. So I appreciate the patience of the public. I truly believe that taking the time, taking more time to listen to your testimony would probably be not worthwhile because the project that I'm going to actually see is likely going to be a good bit different than the one that we have. And if you're on record objecting to this, that's not going to carry over or carry any significant weight to a project that's different. And so I, uh, with all due respect, I'm not going to have public testimony tonight. We're, we're stopping this partway through the direct testimony. When we start again, because it's going to be a different design, we will start from the top uh, with the applicant's testimony. Um, I won't go through any of the explanation stuff that I did tonight. Uh, we'll try to cut that out of it. Hopefully before next time, we will have figured out why your microphones come out fuzzy in my system. Um, I will look at my, I tested mine before the hearing and my speakers were working fine, but I will test them again. Uh, because it possibly could be my end that's making the sound fuzzy and if so, I apologize. So we are continuing application, the hearing on application two zero two one dash R U E dash zero 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 one to a date and time uncertain. The applicant has agreed to submit, uh, any revised application package materials that, uh, he intends to within one hundred and eighty days of today. Uh, and then staff review of that and the process that follows after that will occur in its normal and customary fashion. I, I guess one last comment, I, I will say to the public. Mr. Gary mentioned the state provision about the state law provision, uh, about taking without compensation. Uh, that provision in thirty-six seventy B, I think it was, um, whichever one, um, mirrors the federal constitution, the state constitution. It mirrors numerous decisions at the national and state level on takings. Uh, and it's precisely because of those provisions in everything from the federal constitution on down that the variance concept in zoning and the reasonable use concept in critical areas regulations exist in municipal codes. By and large, there may be some rare exceptions someplace along the way. But by and large, a city cannot deny a person reasonable use of a property such that their property is then worthless. Now, if their property is, what's it called? Uh, half something or other down in Yosemite, uh, that rock face that's vertical. And if you own from the top of the rock face to the bottom of the rock face, uh, I think there's probably an exception in there that says that is totally unbuildable and that's that, but that's not our situation here. So I think the folks need to recognize that that is the constitutional grounds and we have to avoid a taking, which means some use. And the question is what and how big and how handled? The question is not, should there be one at all, but how do we minimize the impacts and allow that use? So anyway, uh, we are continuing as I've indicated previously. Um, I thank you all for coming. And let's see, the time on my clock says seven twenty-two. Uh, we are adjourned for this evening and the recording may stop.